So spare. Our ancestors knew the truth. They knew what to do, what to do. Our ancestors were scientists. Yes, scientists of the spirit. Our ancestors were wise. To observe the solstice time. Our ancestors knew the time. To awaken genius in our minds. Solstice is the time the sun stands still. Solstice is the time for peace and glory. Solstice is the time to meditate so deep. Solstice is the time to slumber and sleep. Solstice is the time the sun stands still. Solstice is a time for peace and goodwill. Solstice is the time to meditate so deep. Solstice is the time to slumber and sleep. Our spirit stands ready. Ready to receive. Whatever we sow, we shall reap. If we have some goals, we will to achieve. Solstice is the time to plant those seeds. Solstice is the time divinely designed. Solstice is the time to train your mind. Solstice is the time to focus on our needs. Solstice is the time to examine our deeds. Solstice is the time divinely designed. Solstice is a time to train your mind. Solstice is the time to focus on our needs. Solstice is the time to examine our deeds. Our ancestors taught us we meditate. Our spirits will deliver what we cultivate. Solstice is the time. Solstice is the time. To cultivate your mind. A time to cultivate your mind.
Are you ready? To take a journey within? Know that peace is your true nature. Peace is yours eternally. Whenever. Wherever. Peace is yours.
Spirits stands ready. Ready to receive. Whatever we sow, we shall reap. We have some goals, we will to achieve. Solstice is the time to plant those seeds. Spirits stands ready. Ready to receive. Whatever we sow, we shall reap. We have some goals, we will to achieve. Solstice is the time to plant those seeds. Solstice is the time the sun stands still. Solstice is the time for peace and glory. Solstice is the time to meditate so deep. Solstice is the time to slumber and sleep. Solstice is the time divinely designed. Solstice is a time to train your mind. Solstice is the time to focus on our needs. Solstice is the time to examine our deeds. Our African ancestors. Comedic ancestors. Our African ancestors. Comedic ancestors. Our African ancestors. Comedic ancestors.
Twenty-one days. Jesus. Praise to our African ancestors. Our comedic ancestors. Let's give thanks and praise those divine spirits that came before us. To our great ancestors. In this time when you look around and you see the decadence, the lack of civilization, the lack of civil behavior, the violence, the murder and the mayhem. It's not new. In our comedic understanding, we say that that is the nature of the human being. That the real devil is the human being. And we give thanks and praise that we are not human beings. We are divine beings made in the likeness of the Most High. Made in likeness of the Creator. And I want to welcome Nita. I see Nita is with us for the first time. Let's put our hands together. I see we have Sakaya. Hopefully I'm pronouncing that right. Sakaya is with us for the first time, y'all. Let's, let's put our hands together and welcome her. Blessings of peace to you. And okay, Shajanta from Chicago is with us. I don't know if that's a first timer. Don't recognize that name. Welcome on our YouTube channel. Thought I saw another one. If you're new with us, put one or put new in the chat. We want to welcome you. We want to greet you. In the ancestral tradition, willing you peace, 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 peace. The greatest gift. Something that is deep within us. I see you, brother Nadal, welcome. Okay, Erica, Erica's with us. First timer, let's put our hands together, y'all. Where's the fire? That's what it's about. And we got Edwin all the way from the UK. What time is it over there in the UK? Edwin, you up late? Okay, Shajanta's win, just three or four times, okay? Welcome, Lynette is with us. Yes, clap it up, Aretha. Our sister in Pennsylvania. We have the UK in the house. We have New York, of course. Brooklyn's always in the house. We have Cincinnati and Chi-Town. And we have Dallas, Texas in the house. Georgia's here, Berkeley, California. Los Angeles is here. Shep Sue Sinev from North Carolina. All right, Ohio. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Welcome. Where are you from, Nita? All right, great. Peace, Jerry, Michelle, Bobby, Jerry Norris. We have. Okay, DC's in the house. Perry is with us. Randy, Michael, Melba. Peace, peace, everybody. Janice is with us. Good to see you again, Janice. And Carlton, do you have a present? And Effie, she's an effie, she's one of our ever-present. Nukira, Nukira Kem, beautiful name. Very nice. It is a wonderful night. You're with us. Maurice is here, Zahara's here. Aima is here. Oh, my brother Sekhamsanyaku. Don't make me start chanting. Sekhamsanyaku, those of you who haven't had the pleasure. Sekhamsanyaku, one of our chiefs in New York. He is the man, the myth, the legend. He was there in the first class taught by our master teacher, Raunef Amen. I think he was sitting in the front first class. And we have first class Barbados in the house. Oset is with us right on time. Hey, welcome, everybody. Peace and blessings to you. It takes 21 days to create a new habit, y'all. You know that. 21 days to create a new habit. Okay, Long Beach, California. And yes, it is Sekhamsantrisa, a beautiful full moon tonight. The moon is full in the sign of Taurus, actually, with the sun in Scorpio. So we are celebrating the Heta Ruh cycle. If you are new with us, with our comedic guided meditation system, what we do is we leverage the power. We leverage the energy of the lunar cycle. The lunar cycle is very powerful. It's 21 powerful days and seven days of reflection. So about 29 and a half days, this full moon. And of course, you sisters know about that 29 day cycle because that is the cycle of human gestation, right? That's the cycle of gestation. So our human vehicle is capable of receiving insemination, right? I think that's the technical term. I don't know much about that. Stop laughing, Sekhamsanyaku. So, uh, so yeah, there's a certain, certain part of the month, this cycle, where our, our sisters can receive a seed and become impregnated, right? So it's a fertile time. And isn't it interesting? Isn't it fascinating that the cycle of the moon? And we're talking about cycles tonight. The cycle of the moon actually replicates itself in the cycle of human fertility. Check that out. Think about that for a minute. The cycle of human fertility. So what our ancestors understood was that it's not just becoming impregnated to reproduce ourselves in another human being. Every month, we have the opportunity to become impregnated mentally, spiritually. We have an opportunity to receive the divine seed and to become impregnated to give birth to another higher aspect of ourself. And we classify these various aspects of ourself in the comedic tradition as the Netaru. Or it's represented in the Paut Netaru, the spheres of the tree of life, the, the fruits of the tree of life. And as it says in, uh, in the good book, as it's called, uh, at the end of days, there was the tree of life and it gave, it bore a new fruit every month. Check that out. What does that mean, huh? It bears a new fruit every month. Well, there's a new fruit that the spirit is giving birth to every lunar cycle. And you have the opportunity to eat of that fruit if you know where that fruit is. And that fruit, of course, is in the depths of your soul. So we use a guided meditation system that we can go within and we can nourish ourselves on this fruit, which is the spiritual power and knowledge and wisdom that is there in the higher part of our spirit to nourish us so that we can be prosperous. We can be successful. We can be resilient in our physical lives, right? Our physical lives full of so many challenges and so many opportunities, but we can show up in a divine nature. And out of every so-called misfortune, we can find the fortune, right? We can find the gold. We can find that wisdom and spiritual power that is there for us when we meet our challenges in a state of peace, in a state of oneness, in a state of wisdom, in a state of submission to our divine purpose, to our destiny, so to speak. And our ancestors said, we were destined to be gods on earth, to be the reflection, to be the vessel, to be the expression of God in the world, not being of this world. So welcome, welcome to KGM. Especially those of you that are just dropping in, just checking us out. Okay, we have the Dashima Priestess of Travel and Culture. Come on now. From New York City. I need to, we need to, I need to get a priest consultation so I can have some travel and culture. And Kiana is from Seattle. Welcome. Baltimore, Washington. Detroit is in the house, Houston. Okay, now Delaware is here, right? You're not far from us. Let's see, we have Saharum Amen, peace and blessings. All right. So we wanted to get together tonight to kind of put, give you the opportunity to ask some questions, give you the opportunity to digest where we're at as we talk about cycles. You know, those of you who are members of our comedic guided meditation group, we meet every month, several times a month, and we focus on a particular aspect of the spirit every month according to the astrology of the month. So this month we are in Heta Ruh cycle, right? Let's see here. This is our, our calendar. So this is the Paut Netaru calendar. It is a chronicle of the cycle of what's called the Paut Netaru, which is translated by the Egyptologist as the company of the gods. So first of all, let's get one thing straight, that when our ancestors said gods, what they were referring to was the divine principle, the divine consciousness or intelligence that was in charge of a certain area of life, right? Our ancestors also said that there was only one supreme being who was before the beginning and who manifested itself through the various faculties of the spirit that we refer to as the Netaru. And our Yoruba brothers and sisters say the Orisha. Our Akon brothers and sisters might say the Obosum. And so on, right? In Western theology, they are metaphorized as the archangels or the angels. And you know, it's interesting when you go through the Bible and books as such, the angels are busy, you know, they're letting people out of jail. They're healing people. They're doing all, all types of things. And, uh, you know, people like, well, where, where are these angels today? You know? So our African tradition understands this one supreme being. We call it Never Chair is one of the names for the supreme being. Because think about it, when you look at into space and you realize, as we recently discovered from the, um, the newest telescope, that, you know, this creation is so vast that you could be looking back over a hundred million light years into the past when you're looking at some of these star systems, right? This universe is so vast that this planet is like a speck of dust. It's like one grain on all. If you got all the sand from every beach in this earth, our earth would be like one speck, one grain of sand, right? So what would we be on that one little grain of sand? So it, it is, it is incomprehensible, the scale, the magnitude of the intelligence that created this universe, this multiverse. So all you can do is, is use names to try to describe an attribute of the supreme being. If you say the creator, you're limited because, uh, does that mean that God was not in existence before God entered into the act of creation? Right? So, um, so we say Never Chair, the Lord of all is one of the names. And the Netaru are the various aspects of our spirit, the angelic powers, if you will, the archangels, the Orishas, you know, the divine intelligences. And you know these from what you would call talents, right? Right, Ruby's, things that make you say whom, which is the mantra of wisdom. So we know these from the talents. When you say, okay, Taurus, for example, and, uh, and we'll go through some examples today when we look into our comedic meditation journal. I think this is kind of small on your side. But when we look into this faculty that we relate to Heta Ruh, but that's really too small. Let me get my book out here. We'll jump back to this in a, in a minute. I just want to give you some background, especially since we have some new folks with us. So you can understand or overstand or understand what we are talking about here. So let's see if I can find this here. Where did you go? So when we say, uh, the energy or the intelligence behind the energy that manifests itself as what we call Taurus, right? Uh, we use the term Heta Ruh. And Heta Ruh gives us the ability to be artistic, to be charming, to be diplomatic, to be romantic, to be elegant, to be harmonious, to be social, to be graceful, tactful, to be an artist, to be a designer, to be a beautician, musicians, performers, diplomats, those involved in the entertainment industry. So when we talk about that, and one of the things that we learned from astrology, uh, if you've been exposed to the, to accurate astrology, is that based on a person's sun sign or moon sign, and some of you get deep in there, you know, the first house and so on, you're able to predict very accurately a person's predispositions, right? A person's talents and say, wow, you know? And some of you are deep in it. You can look at Beyonce and Michael Jordan and, and famous people and say, well, you can see from the presence of the strength of Venus or Taurus or, and so on. You can see where they got that artistic, you know, ability, where they got that talent from. So talent is a very interesting word because when you turn it upside down, you get latent, latent, right? So talent is another way in, in the, in the spiritual tradition, in the ancient African tradition, we wouldn't say the word talent. We wouldn't say, oh, you're talented. We'll say, oh, the Orisha Oshun works strongly through you, right? The Netar, Heta Ruh, or Nebhet is strong within you. And we can see why. We can see from the divination. We can see from your astrology chart, uh, from the position of certain planets, the, the manifestation of certain cycles when you were born. We can see why you're exhibiting that talent. You follow what I'm saying? Right? But, um, the deeper understanding of this is that every month when these planetary bodies are signaling these cycles, we have another opportunity to nurture that talent within us. So we're not stuck, you know, we're not stuck by our natal chart. Like, you know, what, what was dispensed to us, you know, when we were born? We have the ability to adjust and to adapt, to grow and to nurture. We can, we can actually cultivate talent. Some people might say, hey, talent, you either got it or not. You got the talent to be a business person, or maybe you don't. You have the entrepreneurial spirit or talent, or maybe you just don't have that, right? In the African tradition, we say, no, you can cultivate. You can awaken because that talent is a Netar, an aspect of God, right? Anything that you do well, that you do naturally. And look at the word, you do naturally. And the word nature comes from the word Netar. That's where they got it from ancient Egypt. When you say mother nature, you're talking about mother Netar or Netcher. You see? So when you say somebody's a natural born talent, what you're really saying is a Netar, an aspect of God, an archangelic power is strong within that person. And that archangelic power can manifest itself in a balanced, positive, uplifted way. Uh, and it can also manifest itself in an unbalanced and a distorted way. Not that the power is distorted, but like, you know, a light shining through a window. If that window is dirty, if that window is cracked, right? Then that light is going to express itself in a distorted way. But don't worry, we can clean our windows, right? We can clean, we can clean our windows. We can, we can fix that refraction so that what's trying to shine through you, right? Can shine in its purity and in its uplifted way. Give me some fire in the chat if you're with me on this. This is powerful knowledge. This was revealed to us by our master teacher, Raunef Amen. He's the one that put the Osiriset society on this track of using the mantras, the vibrational sounds, the colors, the visual images, every month according to the lunar cycle so that we could become holy, right? Meaning we could become whole. We could nourish ourselves each month with a different faculty. Thank you, Sister Sharon. I see you with the X and Effie, right? We can nourish ourselves. We can nourish ourselves with that fruit that is there. So right now we're sitting in the full moon and the moon is, and the moon is in Taurus. Why are you so small? Let me see what's going on with you. Yeah, you can't see that. There it is. So here we are, November, uh, December 4th, and the moon is full in Taurus. So this entire cycle from the new moon until the next new moon, we have consecrated to the cultivation of that aspect of God we call Heta Ruh. Heta Ruh. And I started off saying there's 21 days. It takes 21 days. Hey, may I see you? 21 days to establish a new habit. Well, if you start at the new moon and you cultivate, not just the habit, you cultivate the mindset and you cultivate the skill set. You need both to be successful, right? You need the right mindset. I'll give you a quick example. Our, uh, family has a restaurant and you know, it's a lot of, uh, it's a lot of hard work involved in a restaurant. Fortunately, my person is not a great cook, so I'm not in there. Uh, and I'm not a good chopper either. But I help out a little bit and you know, you gotta go to the, to the shopping, to the restaurant, wholesale place and lift these cases and stuff like that. And a few years ago, I was lifting a heavy case of sack of potatoes or something. And, and I felt a little tweak in my back. And I said, you know what, the thought, I didn't say, the thought came to me, you know what, you're getting too old for this. You're getting too old for this. You know what I'm talking about, right? And fortunately, I've been trained, I've been well trained for many years in the, in the Kemitic priesthood. And I caught that thought and I looked at it and I said, I said, heaven, no. No way. I will not accept that thought. And shortly after that, I went, started going to the gym and lifting weights and, and doing the different things to preserve myself. And within a few months, I was running up and down the stairs carrying these cases. Because I had to change my mindset. It wasn't my physical body. It was my mental state, which started with, I really don't want to be doing this and da, 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 da. You know what I'm talking about, right? That negative stinking thinking that we're all subject to. So if we want to do better in life, we have to change our mindset, right? We have to change the way that we think. But in addition to that, we need to change our skill set. Because you could have a great mentality and a lot of us do, right? And we've got affirmations going and, and you know, positive affirmations and visualizations and all that. And we're thinking, I can do it. I know I can. I'm a divine being, I'm positive and what have you. But when it comes to the execution, you know? Fortunately, I was able to execute because, you know, I hadn't let myself go. I had, I had been trained in certain discipline. And I was keeping it up to a certain degree, you know? But I needed to tighten up. I needed to, you know, double down on certain things. But some of you, you've got a great business opportunity or you're already in business, but you're not maximizing your business potential, right? Some of you, you've got a decent relationship and you know, it could be better. Your performance could be better in that relationship. But you're not very diplomatic. You know, you know, you, you don't know how to disagree without being disagreeable. Anybody can relate to that, right? You, you know, you don't know how to, how to, how to properly express the need for changes in your mate, in your, in your partner, in your business or whatever, without feeling negative about it, right? So that's a talent, that's a skill set. That's a power. That's not just something you can just think about. That's something that you have to manifest through a power. Because the moon's in Taurus, brother, right now. And, and this is the cycle. You've got to look at where the sun is as well. So the Libra cycle of Heta Ru is in the springtime. So, you know, that's what I'm talking about. Change your mindset, but also change your skill set. So what we do is we meditate for 21 days. You're given the mantras, you're given the words of power. Those of you new to KGM, you were given the amen, right? And if you haven't, do take advantage of that free amen module that we have, right? Let me see here. I can throw that up here. Take advantage of that free amen module, but every month you're given a different faculty of the spirit through which you can nourish your skills, your talent. Talent can be cultivated. It can be cultivated. So here's our Kemitic guided meditation website. For those of you that are just popping in with us here. Let me see. That's correct. So we have a free entry level. That's, that's focused on the amen faculty. That's a very important faculty and that's what we're going to, you know, focus on tonight. When you understand the amen faculty is also some information in here about the Kemitic winter solstice that we'll get into. See if we can get in here this way. It's powerful meditation, powerful meditation track in here. This track right here. Right? You can use for your nightly meditations. This is the On Han Keshang. It's a very powerful mantra. The mantra of what you would call the Ajna Chakra in the Indus tradition. And it's set to a powerful musical track. Give the chant, God, and the breathing, God. And enjoying the music. I'm ready to stop this right now. That'll take you there. Take you there. So in the KGM, yes, we'll give you that website. In fact, in fact, you can go to, let me find that for you. Okay, that's the website right there. And we are supposed to be able to give you a clickable link now with StreamYard. Somebody put it in the chat for us. For the new folks. So yes, powerful, powerful meditation to help you to cultivate that deep inner peace. So we'll come back to that because, you know, happiness you'll learn is the combination of peace and joy, peace and joy, peace and joy. So back to our, our KGM. For those of you that have been with us and you are working that KGM, every month you've been nourishing your spirit. What this calendar means is that tonight, right, the energy is in full force. This is the time for you to evaluate how you're functioning with this power that we call Heta Ru, with this aspect of God. And time for you to do a little self-analysis, right? So I know I'm kind of jumping around here tonight. Let me back up and show you what I'm speaking about. So this is the Kemitic. This is the Kemitic Meditation Journal. And it gives you the calendar for you to follow to know what attribute of our spirit. Thank you. What attribute of our spirit is, is waxing strong this particular lunar cycle? And we follow the lunar cycle because it takes 21 days to build a habit. And it's a natural cycle where you are fully receptive. You, meaning your, your subconscious, your mind, right? Even your body is in a state where it is receptive to receiving new instructions. What do you want to accomplish this month, right? What do you want to cultivate this month? What do you want to change about your life? But rather than just going off of your own idea of what you think you need to focus on, when you cultivate the knowledge of cycles, you'll recognize that indeed there is a time and a place for everything. And when you cultivate what is available, just like if it's a garden, right? Then it will take care of all areas of your life. So in the Kemitic Meditation Journal, it gives you a roadmap for this. It starts with giving you some basic understanding of our nature, that we are human beings, that we have an earthly nature, that we have to meet the physical challenges of life, right? Things like relationships, family, partnerships, business, you know, economics, our social status, our political status, et cetera. These are the demands of physical life, but we also have a heavenly nature with which we get the mindset and the toolset. We get the powers. We get the intuitive knowledge that should help us to be successful in our earthly lives. So heaven and earth is not in opposition. Spirituality and material progress are not opposed to each other. They are supposed to work together. It gives you a map of all the cycles as we go throughout the year. I know this is kind of small, especially on your mobile device, but just bear with me. Gives you a description of each of the different faculties of the spirit. And then it talks to you about the hidden power and key of cycles, of following cycles, of working according to planetary cycles. And then it gives you insight into the process of Kemitic meditation, how to meditate, to breathe, to focus mentally on the vibrational energies that we use mantras or Hakal for, and how to use a meditation script. So it's, it's very detailed instruction. It's part of what helps you to navigate through the various KGMs that we do every month. And then there are deeper levels where you can tap into the energy of planetary cycles, even hour by hour. So that's what this is telling you that 9:28 this morning was the hour of Venus. If you're not familiar, this is military time, right? So you subtract 12. So 3:00 PM was the hour of Venus and then at 10:38 tonight, you have the full moon and the hour of Venus will be conjoined. So it's a very powerful time for you to do your meditation, right? We're going to get out of here and get, get positioned to do our meditation tonight. And then on Fridays, which is the day of Venus, you see the planetary hours that that energy is strongest, right? So it's a, it's a planner. It's a way for you to organize your meditation work so that you can maximize your results. So one of the things that we do every month, I'm just giving you an overview of the journal. These are, these are part of our annual plan, right? Where you look at the things you want to change in general, in your personal growth, your spiritual growth, your relationships, your health practices, your financial practices, and taking assessment of your finances, right? This is 2026, y'all. This is getting ready for 2026. This is to help you be organized. What do you want to accomplish this year? Some of you use spiritual readings, divination. That's where you would record these readings for the year and make sure you, you understand the counsel and you monitor it as you move through the various cycles of the month. So now we have Heta Ru cycle. So let's go back to this. I'm just going to read a little bit of this to you and then we're going to talk about how to use this cycle in conjunction with the larger cycle, which is the annual cycle, which is bringing us into the winter solstice. So when we look at the personality of Heta Ru, your journal divides it into two areas, abilities to cultivate and liabilities to remove. So I'll read you just some of these. So abilities to cultivate, it says artistic sensibilities, innate appreciation and talent for various forms of art, aesthetic awareness and creativity, charm and social grace, charming cheerful and obliging in social interactions, the ability to make others feel comfortable, right? That's very healing. So this is part of an evaluation. You look at your person, right, and say, yeah, that's something I got, or that's something I need to enhance within me. Diplomacy, skillful in handling of interpersonal relationships, tact and diplomacy in communication, magnetism, magnetic and attractive presence, the ability to draw people towards you, invention, innovation, creative problem solving, harmony in relationships, capacity to create and maintain harmonious relationships, valuing and fostering connection, a sense of style, keen sense of fashion and style, appreciation for beauty and aesthetics, romantic inclinations, natural romanticism and a love for romantic gestures, enjoyment of love and companionship, art of compromise, the ability to find compromises and middle ground in conflict, skillful negotiation in relationships, appreciation for and the ability to enjoy life. So you look at that and say, you know, uh, those are some things, there's some things there that I know my life would be improved if I could increase my abilities in those areas, right? And again, in the Kemitic spirituality, we are not identifying with this. This is, this is not our person. We don't identify and say, well, that's not me. You know, I'm not that kind of person. I'm not this kind of person. No, our personality has a certain kind of bend to it. You know, it's a hand that we've been dealt, but we can go into the deck and get some other cards, right? So every month you can get some other cards. You can cultivate that. If you're not a good negotiator, a good, you know, a person that's able to maintain relationships because, you know, you've got that honey that keeps people lubricated and moving and, and, and enjoy being in your company. You can get better at that, but it's not just an act of thinking differently. It's an act of cultivating that energy. So when we look at the liability side, liabilities to remove, relationships struggling, difficulty forming and maintaining healthy relationships, tendency towards disharmony and conflict, superficiality, overemphasis on the superficial aspects of relationships, difficulty in connecting on a deeper level, lack of self-worth, self-love, seeking validation primarily through external sources, overspending, tendency towards overspending or financial imprudence, imprudence, right? Difficulty managing financial responsibilities, unrealistic romantic expectations, idealizing relationships and setting unrealistic expectations, disappointment when reality falls short, jealousy, proneness to jealousy and possessiveness in relationships, difficulty trusting others, difficulty expressing affection, challenges and fear and vulnerability and intimacy, lack of aesthetic appreciation, social awkwardness and vanity, right? So so that's how you would, you know, kind of give yourself, your person, your person a self-assessment. And the whole idea behind this is to understand that the energy is present this cycle, right? The energy is present tonight in this period of the full moon. The energy is present in the next few days, the strongest period of the moon. It's in the air that you're breathing. It's in the atmosphere. The vibration is there for you to tap into. And the interesting thing about this is that you'll find that automatically your liabilities, right, when it comes to these planetary energies will surface. You find yourself in conflict. And you'd be like, I don't know why. Everything was going smooth. And all of a sudden, you know, somebody said this and yeah, I could have reacted better and you know, I'm not very diplomatic. And now I find myself in a relationship crisis. And you don't realize that the energy behind why that happened this cycle, right, is because that's the energy that was predominant, not the negative expression of it. The negative expression is within us, right? And this is an opportunity for you to repair and regenerate and do better in those situations. So give me some, give me some, 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 some power signs in the chat. Those are your Sarans. You know what I'm talking about. Those are your serians, you know what I'm talking about. It's, sometimes it's hard to convey that we've been through so many of these cycles and we see how, man, my relationship fell apart and had a root cycle. Right? You know, I got into a bit, in a fight, an argument, a heroguti cycle. And I had, or I was, I was, you know, uh, I've had a ju- a, a justice situation, you know? Um, et cetera. So these things are happening to us, to us whether we know it or not. And it's the observation of the ancient societies that realized that, wait a minute, there's a, there's a force that's governing what is happening in our lives, and we can harmonize ourselves with this force. We can ride the energy of this force, right? And we can improve ourselves, you know, if we tap in the right way. So this is what K G M is all about. Every month we focus on a different cycle. And if you go into your K G M portal, you'll find a guided meditation and a couple of lectures and question and answer sessions around this head heru uh, faculty for header, for the header who cycle. All right, let me check in with y'all, see if y'all are with me. Yes, yes. Ayama chef on the key. Okay, Danell, thank you for that. So yeah, that's what's happening, that's what's happening this month. Now, um, we are, we are, I don't want to say shifting focus, I want to say expanding focus to now focus on the winter solstice. So you know, you have the uh, the resources in your portal to do your hetero meditations, to do your hetero assessment of what is going on, depending on what's happening in your life. Uh, but there's a larger cycle as, at work as well. And that is the yearly cycle, the annual cycle. The annual cycle moves from solstice to solstice, from equinox to equinox. What is the solstice? The solstice, the winter solstice is uh, is like the full moon of the year. Right? It is the most receptive time. It is the time, it is, it is nighttime, right? It is the peak of the sh- of the Tefnut, or what the uh, the Taoists call the yin, right? Uh, period. It is the time uh, of year when your spirit is asking you, what do you want me to do for the next twelve months, right? What do you want me to do? It's this, it's a time of year, just like we talk about that analogy in the month, where um, you know, a, a human can become inseminated, can become pregnant. Yes, the calendar does give the cycles of the Netta, right? That's what I showed you. The journal is just taking it deeper with the process to evaluate yourself and also to uh, record your meditation scripts, hold yourself accountable, you know, and so on. So in the cycle of the year, the winter solstice is like the full moon of the year. So it is such an important time that we want to take advantage of this time to focus on the larger picture, not the faculties that are uh, available to us to nourish ourselves each month, but the most important faculty. And that is the faculty of our union with God, the faculty of our divinity. What in Khamit we refer to as the osair, right? The osair is our divine self-image. Our divine self-image is what we refer to as osair. And you know, hetero has a lot to do with image. Hetero, the hetero faculty is the faculty of creative visualization, the faculty of imagination, or better said, imagineering, right? You know, the so-called secret, that whatever you visualize, whatever you hold in your mind strongly, the image of, that you will tend to attract to yourself. You know, the law of attraction. Whatever you hold in your mind as an image, uh, you will tend to manifest, you will tend to become. So the highest use of the faculty of the imagination or imagineering is the self-image. How do you see yourself? And when you think about it, you're constantly getting images of yourself. And sometimes we even say it, right? When we're faced with a challenge, we're faced with a difficulty, we have to do something that uh, our conditioned state is telling us is going to be difficult or almost impossible, and we say, what? I just can't see myself doing that. I just can't see myself doing that. Put your hand up if you've ever said that to you, if you've ever, if you've ever accepted that thought, right? I just can't see myself doing that. I know I should apologize. No, we got journals for you. I'll give you, I'll give you a website before we go. I know I should apologize. I know I should, you know, uh, I didn't like what my mate did. Uh, I didn't like what he said, what she said. I know that I should just, you know, I, I should meet that with peace, I should meet that with sweetness. I know they were just tired, you know, but I just can't see myself apologizing. Or I can't see myself, you know, making her a sandwich, you know, or cooking, cooking a good meal after the way I was taught. You know what I'm talking about. You get these images, these flashes of image that you um, that are defining, you know, how you would respond. And how you would respond is who you are. So the law of hetero tells us that it's not what you imagine, right? Is who is imagining? Because anytime you imagine something, you are defining who you are. Let me say that again. Anytime you imagine something, you're defining who you are. So if I see myself unable to maintain my composure, you know, um, you might have lost uh, somebody in your life, you might have, might have had a relationship breakup or whatever. And you know, it was so uh, devastating to your person that you accept the thought that I, I just will never be the same. I, I just can't see myself, you know, going on the same way, you know, I just, you know, so you're visualizing your person, you know, not having joy anymore. You're visualizing your person not being happy anymore. You know, you're visualizing that it's, it's, it's um, it's okay, you know, for us to just like, you know, not be the same. Life will not be the same. So you're seeing yourself out of your true self. Your true self is that ability to be at peace uh, and to enjoy the peace, to enjoy the heavenly victory over the circumstances of earth. And on the other side, to enjoy the good things of earth without the uh, the chains of attachment, the fear of losing it, the fear of sharing it, right? That's our true self, that's our divine self, what we call osair. So when we say, I just can't see myself doing it, we're visualizing ourself as a human being. We're visualizing ourself still carrying grief and worry and heartache and disappointment and trauma and so on, right? Yes, you gotta catch yourself with any negative thoughts and visualizations. That's right. That's exactly right. Kisa, right? Because you can uh, you can do your visualizations in your meditation, and then all throughout the day, you're nourishing negative images of your person reacting a certain kind of way. So that's exactly right. That's an active meditation. You have to be, you have to have menab, what we call menab, you know, mindfulness, some people say nowadays, where you are catching those thoughts. So uh, no, you know, we're not going to do a, a group meditation tonight, but I would urge you, and I'll, I'll make sure you have it before you go, for you to do your amen meditation. And let me explain why. So in the comedic tradition, amen is the faculty uh, or the reality of God's true emotional nature. Now, what is God's true emotional nature, right? Um, in our tradition, our understanding is that God was before the first time, meaning God is immaterial. God's essence was before creation. So you have the ability to touch that infinite source of all things. And that infinite source of all things is what we experience as a deep inner unconquerable state of peace, a state of peace that is beyond anything that this world can manifest, even physical pain. Right? So uh, this amen meditation will help you to cultivate that, will help to seed you about the nature of this unconquerable peace and the enjoyment of this peace, the bliss that you experience when you enjoy this peace, particularly when you enjoy this peace, not only in the meditation state, but actually in life, when life challenges you and you're able to, to reach back into this infinite source of peace and realize that no matter what has just happened, what is happening, or what needs to happen, or what might happen, that you have the ability uh, that you're at peace with it, that you're beyond it, and to smile and to enjoy that victory of your true nature over the circumstances of life. This is what the amen meditation is all about. And this in our comedic understanding is the cultivation of happiness. And happiness is what we are all looking for, right? Happiness is the enjoyment of life when you have the great things, the good things, without the attachment or the worry, because some people can't even enjoy, right? Some, or some of us, all of us, a certain point, you know, you'd be like, this is too good to be true, this is not going to last, you know, you know, or you have, you, you finally got that thing that you were, you were going after, you got the money, you got the job, you got the the relationship, whatever, and it's like, oh, uh, wow, I'm, you know, there's a little worry that creeps in there like, man, what if I had lost it? What if I had to go back to it? And it shows itself anytime some, something might threaten or appear to threaten what you have uh, or what you think you've achieved. You all know what I'm talking about, right? So it's called detachment, you know? Not in a negative, like I'm detached, I can't feel anything, but I can fully enjoy, I can fully, in fact, you can't fully enjoy, you can't fully love somebody if you're uh, if you're haunted by the thoughts that you might lose them. Your head is my head. So you know, we, we can't fully enjoy life. If we're haunted by the thoughts that it's not going to last, or what am I going to do, or I'd be lost without you, I'll never breathe again, you know what I'm talking about. So yes, we're gonna do the amen meditation during the hetero cycle. You can do the hetero mantra as well. But the focus is on cultivating this reaction of inner peace, sowing this reaction of inner peace. And the reason why that's so important right now is that is the main thing that we are going to bring into the winter solstice. That's why we're expanding our focus from just the hetero this cycle into the uh, comedic winter solstice. Because you want to bring the highest of yourself into the most receptive time of year. So let's talk about the winter.
New year is coming, and we're all making our resolutions and vision boards. But did you know that meditation can tremendously increase your manifestation mojo? It sure can. And I'd like to invite you to learn more about this technique as part of a solstice meditation series. You can join in person or follow the series online. Just use the link below this video to gain access to more info. It's one of the greatest parts of our ancestral culture. For thousands of years, the solstice period, December twenty first through December twenty fourth, has been a time used for personal growth through meditation. These four days are the peak of the period, but the winter months in general are the time when our spirits are most receptive to change. Our guided meditation course will walk you through the technique of using meditation to manifest the personal changes that will unlock your full talent potential and guide you to success. Change it up this year. Add meditation to your new year's manifestation plan. Connect with this rediscovery of solstice observation. Use the link below to reserve your spot. Blessings.
Yes, so one of the things that we're focusing on now is that we would like to mass up ten thousand, at least ten thousand people to meditate together during the winter solstice. What do you think about that? On the first day of the winter solstice, December twenty first, this is a time, the most receptive time of year. So imagine there's ten thousand of us chanting this mantra, these mantras, um, focusing on us cultivating our unconquerable inner peace. Imagine what that's going to be like and the effect that it can have on our lives collectively, and also the peace in the world that we can cultivate, because we can't have a peaceful world if we have peace empty people. We've got to be full of peace. Right? We have to be peaceful in order to bring peace into the world. Okay, and Latasha, you said you paid for the winter solstice, very good. And uh, when you click on the link, yeah, there's an access denied. I think we fixed that. But the uh, the winter solstice material is actually going to start next week, Thursday, on the eleventh, right? So let me just share what the program is and tell you what we have for um, K G M members. K G M members are getting a discount on the course. It's a seventy-five dollar course, it's yours for fifty dollars. And your regular monthly uh, membership fee counts towards uh, the three months, because it's going to run for three months. So it'll go into January and February, and then in March, we'll be moving towards the spring equinox spiritual work. So let me see if I can figure out how to show you, those of you that need some more clarity on that. That's the wrong site. Let's see here. Okay, so can I get my person out of there? So this is a website, I'll give you the link and uh, appreciate you sharing it. We have a course, but we also have a free meditation. So the free meditation, this is our goal to mass up a uh, ten thousand people all over the world. Right? We already have groups in, in London that are going to be participating with us. Uh, as well as in, it's going to be live casted from New York, Chicago, uh, Pennsylvania, California, Seattle, uh, Florida, I'm sure is going to be getting together. So there's going to be uh, people coming together in groups for December the twenty first. That's a Sunday evening, it's going to start at five P M Eastern Time, and there'll be a free comedic winter solstice guided group meditation. So I'll share with you this, this landing page. Uh, when people sign up, we're just going to gather their uh, information, their email address and so on, and they'll be invited into the meditation portal. where they'll receive the free amen meditation so that they can get started and prepare themselves for the 21st, for us all to gather together. Now, let's see. Let me make sure you're seeing this. Okay, here we go.
If you're a spiritual seeker who has been greatly grilled by this and a community of people to grow with.
So this is the actual meditation course itself. So again, there's four days of the winter solstice, that's the 21st to the 24th. Everyone is invited for free to attend the 21st. It's a global guided meditation. All right, but to really get the most out of the solstice, there's a full course. The course includes a membership site where there'll be course modules that will be dealing with the fundamental aspects of our, the highest part of our spirit, the omnipresence, the omniscience and the omnipotence of the supreme being and how it manifests in our lives. There will be master classes, three master classes by Raunefra Amen. There will be four live solstice meditations. That would be the 21st, of course, the 22nd, the 23rd and the 24th. We're going to meditate four nights in a row on the winter solstice itself. And then we're going to have powerful community support sessions, meaning we're going to have individual classes on how to do the breathing, how to do certain qigong and tui na warmups to help you to relax your body, to go deeper into trance and so on, how to set your goals for the year, how to put your meditation script together. So all of those things will be separate sessions that will take place multiple times each week so that people can have the maximum opportunity to be able to, you know, get their class, come in person, I mean, come live, right, and get your questions answered. So this just breaks down the value of everything that's being offered. And for your members, you pay $49.95 and you don't have to pay the 25 a month because you're already part of KGM. So your winter solstice package is going to go, the classes start next Thursday, December 11. They go to January 6, the classes and the guided meditations. And then you'll continue in the second part from January through March. We'll be meeting on a regular basis. So let's see here, just wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone. If you're an Osara Set member, your Osara Set Society dues takes care of your monthly as well. So your total course cost, your total cost for the course is 50 bucks for the whole 90 days. All right, let's see if I can stop sharing. Here we go. All right, so let's see, is there any questions? Yes, 1221 will be recorded. If you're not able to make it at that time, you will be able to hear, I mean, view and participate in the meditation and also to use that as your meditation to repeat. The solstice meditation on the 21st is totally free, yes, and open to everyone. And, you know, we want your help on this one. Let's get, let's get a whole bunch of our people in this free guided meditation. It's going to be a very powerful event. And the beauty of it is, is that even if a person misses the whole 21st to the 24th, they're going to be able to go back. Because it's just like in the journal, we talk about the sacred seven, right? It's those seven days around the full moon. It's not just the full moon. So that energy of the solstice is going to persist into January and February. So it's not going to be too late for folks who miss the first four days of meditation to go back and do their yes and get their replays and go through everything else. Meditations will be at 5:00 PM. Okay, and you register for the course. Let me see if I could put that link in the chat. Okay, so there you go. Now, don't, don't use that link if you're a KGM member. If you're a KGM member, what you want to do is you want to log in, right? So let me just show that, make sure everybody understands that, because we don't want you to be double billed, right? So what you would do there. What you would do there is... Okay, that's the amen piece right there. If you sign into KGM and you're a full member, then here we go, on your full member homepage, your full member homepage, there's a button right here. So this is what you want to click on. And this is where you'll pay your $49.95. And you see here, your KGM membership covers the solstice meditation support. So you won't be charged the $25 a month, just the $49.95, right? So make sure that you use that button. Again, that's inside, that's the full member homepage. Click that button to sign up for the course. Now, once you get into the course, here's the welcome. And in the free meditation portal, as well as the page, you'll see the amen information, which you already have, those of you that have been in the course. And the full course modules are locked right now. So the course doesn't start until December 11, which is next Thursday. That's when all of the material will be populated into the course. Okay, so the only thing in the course right now is the amen module, which you all have already had. But, you know, you want to get yourself signed up for the 21st. All right, great. Okay, BB Grandma on YouTube, welcome. All right, so hopefully this was helpful to you to understand that, you know, there's a larger cycle. The larger cycle is the annual cycle. And the most important part of the year for meditation work is the winter solstice. So you want to really do your best to plan, right? Part of what we'll be giving you in the support classes, you know, is how to kind of, you know, purify your environment, your mental environment, your physical environment, how to put yourself in order so that you can be most focused during these, the first 21 days. We're starting next Thursday and we're going to January 6, the so-called Day of Epiphany, right? 12 days, you heard that song, the 12, 12 Days of Christmas, right? On the first day of Christmas, my true love gave to, and so on, right? So this understanding that this powerful energy of the solstice continues for another 12 days. And then it continues throughout the next two months. So, you know, there's different degrees of importance there. You want to spend these four days of the solstice in meditation as best you can every day. You want to have prepared for that by setting out your goals, doing your self-assessment, doing the work that you'll start to get next Thursday on the 11th, you know, so you're ready. And then you want to continue after the 24th, strong, all the way through the 6th of January. No, 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 next Thursday is our usual time, 8 o'clock, right? 8:00 PM is, KGM is at 8:00 PM. So instead of focusing on wrapping up the Heta Ru cycle, for example, we will be, we'll be going right into the winter solstice. And those of you that need to focus on the Heta Ru, you have in your portal the replays of the last cycle that will guide you in that work. So next Thursday, we'll be back at 8 o'clock. That'll be the start of the winter solstice course, if you care to join us. All right, so I think we have covered everything. If anybody has any last questions before we adjourn tonight. And let me put up the proper links one more time in the chat. So once again, if you're brand, brand new with us and you want to jump into our committed guided meditation, you want to get into the free entry level, get a taste of what we do, you can type in this URL right here and you'll get that full amen meditation that we spoke about. You can start to work with that. And we will be emailing you, updating you on the winter solstice and give you an opportunity to come on over into the winter solstice work. And other than that, we want everybody to share that link for the free solstice meditation. Oh yes, the journal, let me put that link in there for you. So if you are interested in the journal and/or the calendar, you can click that link, you go to khamitastrologycalendar.com. And there we have the 2026 Poutnetaru Calendar and the Comedic Meditation Journal. And there are the prices. If you get both, you save 10 bucks. And if you need a family plan, you can get two journals and a calendar. Calendar goes up on the wall. The journal's something private, you know, you want to be able to take your notes in there, write your meditation scripts and so on, right? So that's the link. And there's also a site that is included in your purchase where you'll get more guidance, more information on how to use the journal, right? So there's some classes in here, some background information. That's what the site looks like when you get in there. All right, so check it out. That's the septagon, y'all. Yeah, we talk about the days of the week and never ask the question, why? Who named that? Raunefra Amen's books can be purchased at comediclegacy.com. Comediclegacy.com. All right, Mr. Lamumba. All right, so peace and blessings, y'all. I'm going to be in Brooklyn on Saturday at Nicholas. Nicholas in Brooklyn on Fulton Street. If you are in Brooklyn, meet me at Nicholas at 5:00 PM. And we're going to have a conversation about the Comedic Meditation Journal, the calendar, and also the upcoming winter solstice program. All right, so one last time, what's your mission? Our mission is to get our people masked up, not masked, not masked up, masked up in meditation on the winter solstice, 1221, 5:00 PM Eastern Time. So make sure you spread the word, share that link with everybody you love, everybody that needs some love, everybody that needs some growth and development, share out that link so that we can come together, we can have a huge turnout in person and online, and we can synchronize, we can harmonize, we can have some consanguinity even, right? To manifest our highest selves. Appreciate you all, peace and blessings, have a great evening. Enjoy this full moon. Make sure before you go to bed, you do your meditation and you tap into that magnetic force that's there. Yes, yes, 10K. Tap in to that magnetic force that's there to see your person at peace, enjoying that peace and being able to be a blessing to everybody in your life, in your path. Peace and blessings.
I Khamit, a solstice experience. I Khamit, a solstice experience.
Solstice. Our ancestors knew the truth. They knew what to do, what to do. Our ancestors were scientists, yes, scientists of the spirit. Our ancestors were wise. To observe the solstice time. Our ancestors knew the time. To awaken genius in our minds. Solstice is the time, the sun stands still. Solstice is the time for peace and goodwill. Solstice is the time to meditate so deep. Solstice is the time to slumber and sleep. Solstice is the time, the sun stands still. Solstice is a time for peace and goodwill. Solstice is the time to meditate so deep. Solstice is the time to slumber and sleep. Our spirit stands ready, ready to receive. Whatever we sow, we shall reap. If we have some goals, we will to achieve. Solstice is the time to plant those seeds. Solstice is the time, divine design. Solstice is the time to train your mind. Solstice is the time to focus on our needs. Solstice is the time to examine our needs. Solstice is the time divinely designed. Solstice is the time to train your mind. Solstice is the time to focus on our needs. Solstice is the time to examine our needs. Our ancestors taught us we meditate. Our spirits will deliver what we cultivate. Solstice is the time to cultivate your mind. A time to cultivate your mind.
Are you ready to take a journey within? Know that peace is your true nature. Peace is yours eternally. Whenever, wherever, peace is yours.
Spirit stands ready, ready to receive. Whatever we sow, we shall reap. If we have some goals, we will to achieve. Solstice is the time to plant those seeds. Our spirit stands ready, ready to receive. Whatever we sow, we shall reap. We have some goals, we will to achieve. Solstice is the time to plant those seeds. Solstice is the time the sun stands still. Solstice is the time for peace and goodwill. Solstice is the time to meditate so deep. Solstice is the time to slumber and sleep. Solstice is the time divinely designed. Solstice is the time to train your mind. Solstice is the time to focus on our needs. Solstice is the time to examine our needs. Solstice. Our African and South African. Kemitic and 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 Solstice. Our African and South African.